Well, hello, everybody. Happy Friday. Good to see you. We have agenda review looking at the draft agenda for Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. Manager Stoltz, take it away.
Good morning, Chairman and Commission. Nicole, good news to open the meeting next week?
Yes, good morning. We will talk about Social Workers Month. That is in the month of March. I'm also going to take a moment to go over the appraisal appeals process. We can talk a little bit about that. And then our good news for the next meeting is we do have a Wichita Business Journal Award recipient that we will bring in. And then just a reminder for everyone, daylight savings time is Sunday, so you want to take the opportunity to change the batteries in your carbon monoxide detector and your smoke detectors. That's all I have.
Back in the morning again. Okay. We have one proclamation, Development Disabilities Awareness Month. That's always a very nice proclamation. We have a series of appointments. Item B is a Community Corrections Advisory Board at Large that I know Steve sent you all a an email on. C through G, there's five, Food and Farm Council Board appointments that various commissioners are making. H and I are Airport Advisory Board appointments, one from Commissioner Blue Ball, one from Commissioner Howell. And item J is a Mental Health Advisory Board by the Chairman. We have very few new business, but we have a lot of consent to talk about. Item K is a discussion of creation of a benefit district. Lynn, I don't know if you briefed him or if you want to talk for a second on that or?
Thank you. Yes. So this is a standard resolution for to create a benefit district at the request of the developer. This one is a little different in that typically when we get a developer request, it's signed by them. They own all the lots. And it's 100%, you know, to go ahead and put in paved roads before they sell any of those lots. The only thing different with Barnhart Estates is that this is the second owner of that development. The original developer has sold to another person and a couple of lots have sold. And that original developer still has a couple of lots. So this has not been signed by everybody, but has an overwhelming support. And even the residents who live there now currently are in support of paving these roads. They had always planned to do this at a later date, but have been plagued with bad weather and muddy conditions. So they're all very much in favor of putting in paved roads through here. But that's the only thing that's a little different. Usually they're straight up, not developed yet, 100% developer driven. This one's just a little bit different because it's the second phase of the developer.
So no concerns, Lynn?
No, not at all.
Item L, Sam will get up and talk about a historical annexation and review the service plan for commissioners in for Goddard. And then Board of Bids and Contracts. That's the only new business, new business items we have on consent. We're actually gonna, I'll get to it in this second. We're probably going to move a consent item or two onto new businesses because of dollar amounts and complexity of operation. N through P are corrections operational grants. And Steve is on. Steve, if you could get your microphone up and ready. One is for adult and then there are two juvenile grants. These are every year we do this about this time. And if it's okay with commission, just have Steve talk. Well, and I think he's briefed you already, but for the public, maybe just a high overview of this before, since it's, this will remain on consent and it's a lot of dollars. So Steve, can you talk through this?
Good morning. Steve Stonehouse from the Corrections Department. The one adult item is funding for community corrections, two separate programs. One is the probation program, AISP. And the other one is for adult residential, but that comes together for that 6.6 million and change. That's for adult services. The juvenile services is for GIAC, IIP, which is a former diversion, and juvenile field services. And then the community funding grant is programs from the evidence-based practice funds that we use to grant to providers in the community. So those are three KDOC grants that we complete annually.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
What question? Q and R, we will move to new business and either Tim or his designated will present. And I want to have Tim just talk high level about both of these grant amounts that have to do with mental health.
So this is a change in practice for K Dads as they have, as more CMHCs have become CCBHCs, they're starting to open up crisis centers like we have. And historically, they'd done ad hoc contracts with the few crisis centers across the state. They're doing a couple of things. One is they're trying to get a handle on how much crisis services are going to cost statewide. So they've done this request for application. And so Comcare has identified all of the crisis costs and they've submitted that and they will get awarded some amount. They don't know yet what that amount's going to be. And so that's item Q. And item R is related to mobile crisis. And mobile crisis has been historically, it's relatively new. When 988 came online, there was some additional funding and they had, they granted that out again on an ad hoc basis for mobile crisis services. And so we'll submit an application for that as well. These are, it's a different funding model for K Dads in part because of the changing landscape.
Interesting. So a few questions on Q. Is this incremental money or is this money that we've always received? It's just different or?
This is the full cost. So history, the grant that we've received for crisis service has been about $2.5 million a year for the past years. This is what it costs. So Comcare has made up the difference with revenue and with other CCBHC funding and that sort of thing. So this isolates and identifies clearly for the state, here's how much it costs to do crisis services in this catch.
And they're doing the same thing. Just to clarify, Tim, the $9 million is minus our potential revenues, just for clarity. That's not our full expenditure.
Okay. What is the, and this is a grant application. What's the timeframe on this grant? Do we know? Is this an annual?
It's, we should know what our allocation is on April 1st and it's for July, July 1 through June of next year.
This whole year?
With, with the potential for an additional year of funding.
And I think this is a large sum of money. So this is intriguing. This is a new approach within that they're going to try to designate it this way. What's the specific use for it? Is it, is this for physicians? Is this for?
Yeah, it's all our operational expenses. So staffing, our supplies, everything that falls under our crisis umbrella minus the mobile crisis response, because that's in that separate application.
Yeah. Do we know, is this incremental employees? Is this just current operational employees or?
Yeah, it's just current.
This also doesn't include any funding for construction. We're going to continue to pursue the state for some support for the crisis remodel expansion. This runs through July, June of 26, so it doesn't really touch the year when we, when we open the expanded crisis program.
Okay. Any other questions? Good. Good chunk of money. On that, I do have a question on R. Is this a, this is for mobile crisis, crisis response. Tim, do you remember, we were talking with Chief Sullivan, which is our police department about ICT 1 and versus ICA. He seems to be a big proponent of the ICT 1 model. Can you clarify, particularly for new commissioners, what the difference between ICT 1 and the other four mobile units are, co-responder units are?
Sure. And, and General, correct me if I get this wrong, but this funding is for mobile crisis, which is just comcare crisis staff that go out 24/7. Throughout the course of the night, somebody calls in and says there's something going on. They will go out into the community and meet them. ICT 1 is called the co-responder model. So that's three staff. It's a law enforcement, the paramedic and the licensed masters level therapist that go out. That's ICT 1. ICT 2 through 5 are not co-responder. There's another name for them.
Yeah, they're collaborative response teams.
There you go.
And that's a master's level therapist and a bachelor's level person, their comcare staff that go out to meet with law enforcement. Law enforcement is usually the one that calls for that. They get out there and they say, we need no health expertise. And that was, I think, what Chief Sullivan was talking, liking to see more.
First of all, I'd heard him say that, yeah. The, now is this grant here for R? Is this for our comcare mobile, mobile teams and not the ICT 1 co-responder models, correct? Got it. Okay. Any questions there? I guess I do have, item Q, I think, I'm glad we're taking that to new business because I want the community to know exactly the amount of revenues and what's happening. Is this freeing up? Is this new revenue? Like, I mean, this is?
No.
This is total cost.
But does it free up other revenues in the comcare?
If they're funded to this level, it could.
Yeah, we don't anticipate getting more than what we've gotten in the past, but if we do, we'll be very much, we'll celebrate.
Yeah. It's one way to, it's one way to do it. Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Item S and T, Adrian came in, briefed you on these are renewal grants, both are renewal, right, for health operations. Item U is a donation to CPAA in aging, $200. V is the annual expense report of townships, which we do every year. Anyhow, can you talk about W real quickly here?
Glad to. And I've got Andrew on Zoom, so he'll follow up if I don't get everything completely right. So this is a CIP amendment and it's asking for budget authority for the adult detention camera lock project. And so we have the ability for administrative change orders up to 6%. And I think what we're asking for on this is budget authority of $330,000 and $330,078. And so that's because there was available budget authority in the project and we have authorized some change orders. However, in the project, we didn't ask fully for all of change order authority. And this was a ARPA project. So we're asking for that remainder of 330,000.
Because the additional funds still are the funds or is this?
So this is actually, we have, if you remember in the CIP policy, we say that when there are excess dollars from cash funded projects, they go to the CIP reserve. So I think we have a balance of about 700,000 from that right now. And this is the exact reason we have that is when there are overages and things, we still have that cashier. So this will come from that CIP reserve from savings from past projects. So not our.
But it's property tax dollars.
It's historical property tax dollars, yes.
Questions? Item X is an amendment to risk management policy. You've either been briefed on or you will be briefed on this sometime today. Staff is working their way through to you all. Y or position reclassifications, there's two, both are finance types of positions that are embedded in aging and one in health. So we're reclassifying two positions there. And item Z, we're going to pull, we'll bring that back on to March 25th meeting. And the rest of the consent is routine plat business mainly. There is a fire agenda. Did we decide to leave the, it's the, the only consent item on fire agenda is the
See that we have a fire agenda here, do we?
I believe there was in the email from Sherry. So I believe there is, I think it's the same policy, the risk management policy and minutes. I think were the two things in the.
I don't think that needs to go to fire because it's counting risk management. We handle that all through one fund. So I would say we actually don't have to put that on the fire agenda if you're okay with that, Justin.
We could talk more, but I think that'd be okay with it.
Tentatively, there is a fire item agenda. It'll just be minutes for you to approve, especially if we leave the risk management policy as on the main agenda. So.
Very good. Then we'll have to approve those minutes later. Just saying. Minutes for the, approve the minutes for the meeting that we have minutes for. It's all I'm saying. Just kind of, there's no actual subject matter, right? And I think minutes can wait until we have something, assumptions. I don't know. We need to have a meeting to approve that.
I would agree with that. Yeah, certainly.
So if, if we work this out, we may or may not have.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure the fire chief would appreciate if not coming over for just a minute.
Especially when he's last. That is all we had for any questions or so we'll move Q and R from consent to new business. Other than that, are we good with this agenda for next Wednesday?
I think we are good. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Now it's legislative platform discussion time. There's a lot happening. So.
Star of the show, time to call.
Okay. Morning commissioners. So I sent an email yesterday. I think there's a couple of bills we probably want to discuss this morning. First one is, and we talked about this Wednesday at the commission meeting, House Bill 2396. This is a property tax bill. This was amended by the House Committee and I think we may want to talk about the amendments and I'm going to have Lindsay speak to it because I think there is a significant change that I think she wants to speak to. But I just want to see if there's any testimony that you want to provide on this before it goes to the Senate side or any way that you want to weigh in on this bill. Then the second item, I'm going to hand over to Justin. We talked about this last Friday at Agenda Review. This is the no impact home base business. This will go up for hearing next Wednesday. And so just wanted to see what you thought about the testimony that Justin provided on this. I know that Commissioner Howell had some reservations when we talked about it last Friday. So provided a copy on that. So at that point, when we get to that bill, I'll hand that over to Justin. But I'm going to first start with House Bill 2396. And Lindsay, do you want to talk about that amendment in there?
Sure. So commissioners, just to recap on what this is, this is that property tax lid has nothing to do with valuations. This would essentially return us to kind of a property tax lid that we had lived under for several years. And what it does is I actually think it achieves what the legislature wants to do in that it restricts what a government can actually increase its levy to regardless of values, regardless of mill levy rate. So one thing that happened to just be really fortuitous yesterday is Garth Herman, our bond counsel, was here to sign some bond sale documents. And he actually mentioned some heartburn with House Bill 2396. And it's because of, if you go to page two, it's the bold section three toward the bottom, starting with row 39. And what he noted that I had not caught was that this talks about bonds that were approved by a vote of the electors at an election. So what it does not permit is, for example, the bond issuance you approved on Wednesday, that said, we sold bonds. That wasn't the result of a public election. That was because we have authority under state law for you all to issue general obligation bonds. And so what he has pointed out that under this provision, we would no longer be able to have the full faith and credit of the county. He said, you could kiss your AAA goodbye because this restricts it to just new debt that's issued to cover that to cover debt that's done for an election. We don't do that. So we would not be able to increase our levy for that, nor would any other government be able to do that. I'm not as worried about that at Sedgwick County because I don't anticipate that we would typically increase our levy due to that. But we do have to be able to say that we would rely on our full faith and credit regardless. And so he had put together some language that basically would say increased property tax revenues that are debt or that are required to pay debt service based on, he said, KSA 10 dash, and I'll grab my notes, 10 dash 301 et sec. And so that is basically the statutory series that allows municipalities to issue debt. And so if the commission did choose to be a proponent, there are quite a number of proponents at a local level for this. Then we would want to propose that we do that. But in light of this, I also think our county clerk has noticed that this language talks about county clerks in all circumstances instead of election officials, if there has to be a petition. And so we would want to update that language. I don't, I think that's pretty critical because there are four election commissioners in the state of Kansas. Not every election is handled by clerks. So those would be the two things that I think if this commission wanted to support it, we would want to ask for those tweaks.
Lindsay, just to make sure I fully understand the public understanding. You're talking about the bond. When we issue bonds and sell bonds, we basically backstop those with a guarantee of sorts that we would be able to use property tax dollars to assure the revenues for the bond.
Right.
And what this legislation in its current state says is that no longer will be permissible? Is that my understanding of that correctly?
So right now, when we sell bonds, we give it, we say it's the full faith and credit of the county, which means that a bond issuer could force us to raise our mill levy rate if necessary, or basically have first dibs on property taxes. What this law does, would do is effectively prevent us from saying that unless there had been a public election. And that is not our typical process. We have, you all have a special charter resolution that actually speaks to your ability to issue general obligation debt. I think we have demonstrated, you know, we're at around 8% of what the state allows us to issue. We have a AAA credit rating, one of only two counties in the state that has that. So this doesn't necessarily concern me from a logistical perspective, because I don't think we'll ever have to raise our levy. But it prevents us from saying it will be the full faith and credit, and that is a big deal.
We would have to have an election on a specific bond.
In order to claim this. And I don't think anybody thinks that that's a practical use of
$130,000.
Our time.
Especially if there's only, if you only have special elections three times a year.
Right. It would certainly interfere with business process, not just for us, but anybody issuing debt. So again, it's not just the Sedgwick County concern. This is a, every municipality concern that's subject to this.
Just trying to think about the, trying to explain this to make this make sense to everybody. So if a, if a government decided to spend a lot of money on a lot of bonds and then their annual budget was much more expensive, much, much higher as a consequence of all that debt. Is that going to be a way around the principle of this bill?
So I don't think so, because what this, there are still rules under state law about how much debt you can carry. And we are unique in the very low amount of debt that we have. I think most cities and counties are not going to be in the same position that we are. I think what you would see if you look at most annual comprehensive financial reports is that they're between 50 and 75% of their tax amounts. And so I think just there are inherently other protections under state law that would prevent this from undercutting the spirit of the overall property tax lid.
Because again, I understand your answer. I think for us, you know, we make choices to cash fund things we could bond.
Right.
And again, if this was to pass, even with the caveat, the remedy, the solution that I think has been suggested by our bond council, we would have the option then of not using some cash and bonding some stuff gives us some freedom. I mean, I don't want to create another loophole in the law that would be avoided by great governments like Sedgwick County. So I'm a little concerned that they would, they would view this as a loophole.
I, I can see your point, but like I said, I think there are plenty of other protections in state law already that are, are deep seated and aren't at any jeopardy of changing.
Okay. And just to let you know, the hearing on this was Tuesday, so we missed the hearing unfortunately. And I believe they're planning to pass this out of committee. Probably I think either today or tomorrow, actually today, sorry, this afternoon, this evening.
I think we've heard it already has passed out of.
Passed out. So then the question is, any justice, any justice we need to make will have to be a floor amendment or on the Senate side. Did I see that Johnson County is supporting this and some of the leagues are supporting? So this appears to be a step in a decent direction, except for what you point out.
Of the options.
One other thing I'd say, I've been talking to the tax chair who came up with this idea. He said, this is very unique. And nationally, this doesn't exist anywhere. This is an idea that's never been done anywhere in this nation. So to me, there is a lot of value and again, by not having to have an election, but do a protest petition to me is, is a revolutionary idea. Second of all, that does provide that $60 million that Astro Fund, in my opinion, incentivizes governments to be conservative. And so to me, this checks a lot of good boxes. It helps us, you know, be conservative in our spending, our budgets will be more conservative. States stepping up to provide, to provide some funding for their, their offices. One thing it doesn't do is it does not address the, the grossly overvalued properties. I think there may be some of us are interested in some type of solution to address the properties that have a gross overvaluation. And there's not that many of them, but there are some. And I have a new idea. I don't know if I should share it here, but I did, I did send some information to the chair asking him to consider an idea that would address those specifically. I don't think the whole system is broken, but that is a part of the system that is broken. And rather than changing the entire system because of that, it does happen sometimes. I would like to see us address that specifically. I think there's a way to do that. So I would probably like to work on some, maybe some additions to what's been played right now. What's out there right now, I think we need to address that one piece of this puzzle.
So what's the formal action that you're needing from us? Anyhow, are we asking formally to make some recommendations to the Senate? Are we going to send a letter to the Senate? Like what is exactly, what are you asking of us?
Well, I think what I'm asking is, do you want to be a proponent of this? I mean, do you, do you want to weigh in on this? And how do you want to weigh in on this? Do you want to take action? I mean?
Supportive of, of the bill and just not have a comment that weighs. Well, I guess your point, you said it passed out of committee, but it hasn't gone on general orders yet. So here's the problem is this, the, you know, there has been a campaign against this bill by two organizations. And I've been told by people on the House side that they think this is a good plan. The Senate is absolutely not even going to give us a hearing. They won't even get a hearing. So our challenge is going to be, I don't think the challenges on the House side are challenges is getting the Senate to understand why is this a good bill? And the one thing I would point out is this is the only bill that's being seriously considered by anybody that actually addresses the issue of spending. It doesn't address the thing they're concerned about, which is the appraisals. And again, that's what I'm saying. If you could somehow take this, this principle and add in the issue of over appraisals to that, I think you've got a package that it really does make a lot of sense. So to me, I think our, our solution should be this, you know, this does address spending. It does address underfunded mandates. It does hold down property tax, incentivizes conservative budgeting. It puts the power back in the hands of the people. Those are all great things. It doesn't address the overvalued properties. If you add that piece into this, I think you have a winner. We've got to talk to the Senate about how to do that. So to me, there is a, that's the only piece that's missing. And I think if you add that piece back in again, I don't know why the Senate would be opposed to at least have a hearing on it, but we have some work to do because right now it's dead on arrival.
Chairman, could I make a quick comment? And I don't want to muddy the waters too much. And I obviously defer to the will of the board or any other comments by staff. I did want to point out that section 2C in the bill where you're talking about the $60 million that can be distributed. I don't know if there would be any interest in the board's part. We, we're dealing with the sales tax situation where we're trying to clarify that it's based on taxes or based on the assessed value instead of taxes levied. Section 2C on that bill, page three, does still have that language about taxes levied. So it'd have the same problem, essentially giving more of that $60 million chunk of money to municipalities that would have higher mill levy rates and tax rates. Again, I think that point's probably a secondary concern to anything Lindsay mentioned, but if there were suggested changes to the bill, that's one I at least wanted to mention. Again, I do recognize that muddies the water some, but if we were to remain consistent with our other bill that we proposed.
Well, the two things in this bill that I, I know Commissioner Howell, I'm in agreement with him that it's probably in its current position, not going to see the light of day in the Senate. I guess the question is, the general obligation bonds is a concern. And that, as Justin raises, I think we need to be consistent with it. Do we want to suggest Adam or the Chair Smith that maybe we make those adjustments and here's why and see if, and then the added language on the appraisals?
I think that's all great stuff. And the one thing, one other thing I would add to this, which I don't know if it's intended, but Senate Bill 13, the R and R laws being superseded by this. But it's been, one of the accusations against this bill is it's trying to mask transparency. They think the R and R is somehow transparent. I think it's unworkable for larger municipalities, frankly, but trying to add transparency back in, if you really want to say that we need to publish our draft budget by a certain date and we have to have a public hearing and, and there ought to be ways for people to know what that is. I'm not sure that the notification in the mail, because it's so expensive. Ought to be the requirement, but I think there should be public disclosure. Ought to be the requirement, but I think there should be public disclosure through publications and through websites. So people know what's being discussed and there should be a public hearing. Add that piece of transparency back into this bill, along with these other changes. I, I would never say this is not a transparent process, but they think the R and R process is, is how they, they claim this issue of transparency. And because we're not, because we're wiping out the R and R law, if you will, Senate Bill 13, that part of that law, they're claiming this is not transparent. And that's, that's the nature of the, that's one of the biggest reasons for the the opponents, they're saying that this bill is not transparent. To me, that's not the issue here. I, I think we can add transparency to those, those points can be added back in as a recommended amendment to this bill. I have no problem publishing a draft budget, having a recorded vote. Public, public knowledge about what we're doing and inviting them to a public hearing. All of that is totally fine. I, I passionately support those ideas. I just don't think that is a reason not to have this bill. So this is, is argument of transparency. We just need to address it. And I think when we, we talk to the Senate and say, I know you want transparency and so do we. And we would actually, actually ask you to put those pieces back in here. One thing I don't want to do is have to find the R and R mailer because unless they want to pay for it. I think that's a lot of expense that it's frankly wasting taxpayer money. So I want to be transparent, but not waste taxpayer money at the same time. I think we should ask them to put those provisions back in because I don't mind them at all. That's not, those are not problems for us. In fact, before R and R law was even in place, we've always had public hearings on the budget. What if we ever not have public hearing on the budget? It's always, it's always happened. So this idea of we're not being transparent, not letting people know what we're doing is a, is a false accusation against us. But to that point, let's just codify the, the truth that we're going to do these things anyway. Make it required, so.
Chairman, may I give a suggestion? Would you like me to reach out to Jason Watkins and maybe just ask him what the best approach might be if we're supporting this and, and how to?
Those two concerns and then also like the, we're young, it's concerning about the R and R. That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, sounds like Brent Shelton has an update on the bankers bill and then we'll move into the no impact home base business.
Just a real quick update. You were all briefed a week or so ago. I came to you about a month ago as an opponent of this bill. I'm now a proponent of the bill after some compromise was worked out. Yeah, I'm wishy washy. But it is a good bill now. It's moved out of House Committee. It's going to the Senate side for a hearing on Thursday. There's been a request from the KAC for some written testimony in support of the bill. So I'm just here to ask today if the commission wants to do that, if so, we can prepare something and get it in front of them.
Yes, we saw some updated comments and reports from you. So in summary, you've worked closely with whoever you're all in agreement or at least were in agreement on our side that this.
Right. The Kansas Bankers Association, the League of Kansas Municipalities, the Community Bankers Association. The KAC has been involved. We had some folks from local government, the state treasurer, all met. And originally, the bill had some objectionable language about being forced to allow banks to accept deposits at below market rates. We still maintain that first look provision for banks because it's, it's important to keep money local when we can. But they just pay the market rate like they do today. The good piece of the bill is that there would be a collateral pool which would simplify administration for the banks. It simplifies it for us and still secures with collateral public deposits, deposits of public funds in, in local banks. It's a win for everybody at this point.
I agree. Yeah, I agree. We're good there, Tony.
Work with Tony, we'll put something together.
Yes, please. Yeah.
Justin, do you want to do the?
Commissioners, Justin Wyden, our county council, the, I know we've talked about this bill some last week at Agenda Review. I think at this point, just as a, and I think Tony updated some of this, this has been approved by the House. There was a vote. It was not a veto proof majority. And then it's now scheduled for hearing on Wednesday in front of the Senate Committee. And at this point, I think the question would really, this is, Chairman, is there any interest in me going over this bill again? I think I've mentioned it before to you all, but.
Pretty good.
Yeah. And I think really the question is whether the board wants to, do any type of, whether it's testimony or some other action on this bill or not. I think will of the board.
Where is it at in the process? Do we know? Is it, it's in committee? This Wednesday?
Well, I, I've read your, your letter. It's just a couple of questions. The, the bold face area that kind of quotes, I think it quotes from the, from the bill. Isn't, isn't alcohol and drugs and sober living, it's already covered in state statute? Why, why do they have to say?
That's, that's a good question. For example, because the way it's worded is that it says, it's worded in a somewhat awkward way, but it says that the homeowners can run any business or sell any goods or services permitted by state law. Well, that's anything that's not illegal. And then it says they can do any of the operations within their home or on the property. So that's pretty much anything. And then it says the things they can't do are sell alcohol or sell, I shouldn't say sell alcohol. And I actually, I would suggest a slight tweak to that. I apologize. It should say liquor. The bill says they should not sell liquor. Or legal drugs, which again, like you're pointing out, Commissioner Meister, they can't sell legal drugs because that would be illegal. The operating a sober living house and sexually in a business, there's no legal requirements under state law I'm aware of that would prohibit them from doing that. So those would be limitations. So really the, the selling liquor, the sober living house and the sexual in a business are the three limitations. But anything else would probably be fair game if you had a home and you operated a business in the property.
Well, we can leave that then. And then that my second of two questions is, does this supersede? If, if there was a local HOA or as is referenced, improvement districts, does, does this with this law?
It, so if an HOA had restrictive covenants, they actually changed that in the bill initially. It would have overridden those or at least it proposed to. I think there's legal questions as to if it could have or not. They changed that and removed that provision. So if there are covenants in place, those would still be honored. But improvement districts are in the unincorporated area. And unless there's a, unless there was a restrictive covenant of some sort in place, then being an improvement district in the unincorporated area, you'd be treated the same way as any other unincorporated area property. And you could have the same uses. This bill wouldn't treat them differently. And that's, I pointed that out in part because I do think in comparison to other counties, Sedgwick County has a fair amount of residential type neighborhoods in the unincorporated area, which is something that's unique about county.
Oh, I'm in favor of submitting this testimony. That's all right.
Okay. Have your thoughts? And I guess the impetus of this is on their end is for the proponents of this bill is property rights, right? Just more property rights and.
I think that's correct.
Okay. And then, and all we're saying is that this removes power of local zoning authorities.
That's definitely the tenor of this letter and obviously you guys could suggest changes that if you saw fit. I would point out Scott Wade on Planning Department staff looked at this and arrived at the same conclusion. I was a little surprised when I saw the hearing on this at the, the House level that the summary from the reviser's office and the comments from other parties, none of them noted in the unincorporated area. The conclusion that both planning staff and I arrived at, which is a pretty big change from how we currently have things. We have, as noted in this proposed response or testimony, we have kind of a tiered approach where there are certain things people can do completely by writing their home because it really doesn't impact the neighbors in any significant way. There are certain things where it may impact if you set limitations on, and there are certain things, if you're going to do it, it's actually a zone change would be required because it's, you know, an industrial use, for example. So that's how our status quo is set up. Happy to answer any other questions.
As board does. Well, I, I don't materially object to the letter at all. I, I do think it, it's going to be important to make sure that the Watkins team understands exactly what our concerns are. And by the way, they can, he can communicate that to those committee members. Yeah, we're for property rights, but there are some, some challenges that we also want to, we don't want to be completely neutered in the process of what's happening in these.
Would it be worth Chairman to, to add a sentence at the beginning that we recognize property rights in our some vague introductory statement that.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree at all.
Maybe just add in the beginning.
Yep, we can do that.
Any objections? Okay. Thanks, Justin. That's it?
Really?
All we got. That's all we got. Okay. All right, everybody. Have a good weekend. See you next week.